I would like to call to order the January 28th study session of the Newport Beach City Council and would ask our city clerk for a roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present?
And we'll move right into the first item, which is a clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner?
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Petros?
None.
Selig?
I have none.
Dagel?
I have none.
Odds are getting tighter. Hen?
Mr. Mayor, I find that everything in the agenda was perfectly clear to me and I-
... it would be feasible to use the pier for recreational purposes similar to how it's being used now for fishing and pedestrian use, consistent with how it's- and it could be rented hourly as a city facility through the Recreation Department for public events, private events. We could also consider using temporary food vendors out there. The Recreation Department doesn't anticipate any ongoing programming opportunities at the pier for a variety of reasons, including the weather, surface of the deck, and because we have space better suited for their purposes. But they may try to get a fitness class out there, possibly tai chi. The pier deck is about 6,400 square feet, 275 square feet is taken up by a storage area, and the first floor of the restaurant occupies approximately 1,680 square feet of the deck at the end of the pier. Possible reconfiguration options include installing a permanent seating element, a stepped bench maybe towards the far end of the pier, and then it could be used for special events set up such as a temporary stage with folding chairs for events or concerts or the like. And with the appropriate permits and approvals, the pier could also accommodate a food truck. A new bait and tackle shop or snack shop with a smaller footprint than the existing restaurant facility could be constructed, or possibly a public restroom. In researching how other cities program their piers, we found that most events are held at the base of the pier or in the parking lots to allow for maximum capacity and flexible configurations. But for example, Venice Beach has a museum without walls and it displays ocean-related exhibits and animals on Sundays. San Clemente holds a weekly farmer's market at the base of the pier. Huntington Beach has an art fair on Fridays near the base of the pier and holds concerts during the summer. And Santa Cruz schedules quite a few events during the year, including Jazz on the Wharf with musicians in and around all the restaurants and businesses on the pier. We discussed the change in use with the Coastal Commission staff and they were receptive to the idea. The coastal development permit would be required for removal of the building, and the Coastal Commission staff was non-committal regarding the type of conditions that they may place upon use of the pier after the building was removed, but emphasized that their concern would be with maintaining public access to the pier at all times. Prior to moving forward with the removal of the building, one option would be to issue an RFP for proposals from restaurant tours. There's been interest in the building since it was vacated by the last tenant from several restaurants and restaurant brokers. The owner's of Blue Water Grill toured the space last week and have an interest in the location, and they actually recently responded to a similar RFP for the pier in Seal Beach. The information in PowerPoint from the last study session is available if you have any questions on those other options as well.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Thank you. That was interesting to see what some of the other people are doing. Part of me really would like to see us do something different. Part of me is really lazy, though. If someone else wants to just build a restaurant there and do all the work for us and pay us for the privilege, maybe that's the easiest thing to do. So I'm sort of torn here. I don't have any strong sense of direction.
Councilwoman Curry?
When we say that we have people who are in the restaurant business, restaurant brokers are interested in the space, I mean, are they interested in it? Are they interested to tear it down, build something new? I presume that's what they would do. How interested are they?
We toured Blue Water Grill through the property. They're willing to give us a proposal right away. They'd like to move into the space right away. They have a similar property in Avalon that they just completed, and they really like the concept of being on the pier and creating an attraction for the visitors to the pier.
Well, if somebody in the private economy believes that that's an economic way to make business, to do business, I'd be for that, and I think that's how we ought to probably go, to accomplish what the Coastal Commission wants to do in terms of keeping it open as an amenity and making it economically viable and something that enhances the whole neighborhood. But I want to make sure that they're all going into the size wide open and they're comfortable with their own economics.
And the tour that they did was on the understanding that it would be essentially the existing building that would be refurbished and then they would move into it?
Correct.
Did they evidence any ideas about significant change inside the building to facilitate their thoughts?
They didn't provide any specific feedback on what reconfigurations they would do to the building. That's something that we would probably vet through the RFP process.
I would assume that our ideal position would be that any tenant improvements would be their responsibility with our approval. Was that discussed at all?
We talked at the last meeting about having some sort of city contribution, and given the extent of the improvements required to the building, that may be the only way that we could get tenants interested in it. The scope and the scale of that contribution is another thing that we would identify through the RFP process.
Would we need Coastal Commission- let me rephrase. What activity can we do within the existing building or the existing footprint without requiring Coastal Commission approval?
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Kim Brandt, Community Development Director. As long as we're just maintaining the existing restaurant, it's just maintenance, and we would be looking at tenant improvements that are just to the existing restaurant. We would be not expanding the footprint. So under that category, we really feel that we would not need a coastal development permit. And so that's something that is, in terms of timeframe, is a little bit quicker. And I think the whole purpose of the RFP process would be to identify the amount of the city contribution to the renovation of the building and the amount of the tenants' contribution to the renovation of the building. And so I think that's important information that we can consider if the council wants to pursue that, if we could further define it.
And flexibility, does it mean same footprint down and up, or does it mean existing exterior walls and-
Right. It would be a renovation to the existing building. I think in our previous presentation in November, we identified that there was, I think about, I want to say $300,000 to $400,000 potentially in needed improvements?
That is correct.
So that's a significant amount of money, but in conjunction with a long-term lease, I think that that can be financially feasible. And based on the economic analysis that was provided by our consultant, they felt that that was reasonable. So we need to test the market if the council wants to pursue that.
I was- I am one of the more vocal proponents for the flexible space at the end of the pier. However, you never want to give up the bird in hand. I am interested to see what this proposal would bring to us, but I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. I think of a TI as, you know, maybe new wallpaper or moving some walls around in an office space or some new carpet. What I heard the last time we were here was significant water damage to the foundation, plumbing, electrical, rot. That is something that far exceeds TIs. That is a structural renovation, correct?
Not necessarily.
I'm asking Mr. Simone?
The building does need a lot of TLC. There is dry rot, there is water damage, there's ADA access issues. We did some cost estimating with regards to repairing all that and including the tenant improvement. So it's not a simple wallpaper and paint.
Right. Okay.
I'm assuming you pretty much take it to the studs, right? And we constitute the essential support elements of the building and-
I think there is a lot of different ways to look at it, and it's all going to depend on what the tenant would like to do with the building as far as doing the repair. What they can't do is demolish it. If they think that some of the siding needs to be repaired or replaced, then that'd be part of that scope and project.
Could you go back a couple of slides so we can see the pier and the building? Something we showed, the footprint, do we have something that shows the footprint of the- yeah. So that's the existing building, the footprint right there in the red. I'm just wondering if this is a serious conversation, and the city is going to contribute some funds to it, whether we can't work with the tenants and incorporate some of these other ideas we've had as far as getting their buy-in to having a few things out there. We wouldn't have the same amount of space, but we could still do something besides just have people fishing and not totally jettison some of the creative thinking that came out of the first session.
A couple of comments. I didn't realize that Blue Water Grill was interested in the space. I am very familiar with the one they did in Avalon. They took a derelict restaurant that hadn't been open for a number of years and basically stripped it down to nothing and completely reskinned the outside and did a lot of tenant improvements on the inside. And it was very successful. They did it in less than a year. Because at the end of one season, they started working on it, was ready for the beginning of the next season over there, and it was very successful. They had like hour waiting times all summer to get into the place. So they've got a pretty successful formula. The other thing is, I'm somewhat familiar with what's going on in Seal Beach, and they had a little bit of rough time when they did their first request for proposals for restaurants because they put some unrealistic conditions in the RFP, and it made it difficult for restaurants to make a reasonable proposal. But now, I understand, they have quite a few proposals to consider for releasing the rubies that was at the end of the Seal Beach Pier. So for me, I'd be in favor of testing the RFP process and see what we get back.
As would I.
Yeah, I would too. Would it make sense for us to have a look at the RFP before it goes out? Ed, is that something you'd want to do here at council or just a subcommittee group?
I just raised that as a caution. I just think when the staff puts it together that they ought to consider that. In fact, they might want to take a look at the original Seal Beach RFP and the second one and see how they differed.
All right. Any further counsel comments? Then I would like to open it up for public comments. Is anybody from the audience that would like to comment on this item? Please come on down.
John, my name's Carter Harrington. I'm here on behalf of Blue Water Grill. Tried to get them here, but they had a meeting in Avalon and couldn't get a boat back in time. So I'm here to field any questions. Essentially, what they would like to do is make it an iconic destination and get more foot traffic on the pier. Currently, in my opinion, it's underutilized. And a restaurant, maybe a bait shop, something to that tune, you know, I think would work very well there, bringing more revenue for the city.
All right, thank you. Appreciate you coming down. Anybody else like to make comment on this item on the agenda? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number three, City Urban Runoff Water Quality Program Overview. Looks like Dave Webb.
Good evening, council and councilmembers. Happy to bring this program tonight. This is at the request of Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Dagel, who wanted to kind of look at our holistic view of our urban runoff program. It's a very complex, very big frontline program. So I apologize in advance. We have a lot of slides tonight, but it is a lot of detail, but I think you'll enjoy looking at the holistic program. In addition to that, I don't want to take all the credit here. We have some really great staff. We have John Kapler with us, Shane Berkeley, and Bob Stein, I believe, in the back. There are heavy lifters on this program. They do a lot of the work and help prepare this program tonight. So with that, if you have a question, go ahead and raise your hand or we can get them at the end. That'd be fine. So starting off on our urban water runoff program, it's broken into a bunch of components, and I have them listed here. The first one being the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, or you've heard the word NPDS permit. That's kind of the backbone and the guiding part of the program comes out of the Clean Water Act. We have programs and policy oversight, the regulatory side. We have what they call total and maximum daily loads, or you hear the word TMDLs. We have other constituents of concern we're still working with that could turn into TMDLs. They could do something else, but we're looking at those. We have lots of capital programs that we run out here in projects, and some of those you're familiar with and some we'll show to you tonight. We have an ongoing maintenance and operation component of it, an urban runoff reduction component. We have community outreach and education. And then I wanted to share with you tonight probably the program costs and also the results we're getting out of that, along with some of our goals. Under the NPDS permit history, this again came out of the Clean Water Act Amendment in 1987. What it does, it regulates the discharge of urban runoff and stormwater. The way it works with us is the Orange County is our general permitee and we are a co-permitee under that. We are on our fourth term permit now. They're about a five-year cycle, and we're just starting the next one. We'll be starting negotiations on that, looking to go into the new permit. So NPDS permit requirements today involves implementation of stormwater management programs. You'll see some of those tonight, various programs that are construction and inspection, et cetera. It requires construction best management practices. You'll hear the word BMPs. We have to perform inspections. We do that at construction sites, municipal facilities, industrial, commercial areas. And with that, we also have to perform enforcement when we find problems. We have to participate in a host of meetings. We have general permit meetings, co-permit meetings. Sometimes we have meetings to meet about meetings. There's a lot of regulatory information in here. And also conducting public outreach and education. And with all that, we're required to do an annual progress report that talks about what we've done, our construction management practices, our violations, our inspections. It's all bound up and submitted every year through the county. Under our NPDS inspection under the construction and municipal area, in 2013, staff conducted 643 construction site inspections. These are broken up into high and low priorities. We had 168 of them high priorities. These are sites we have to go out once a month. They're very close to the water. There's something critical nature of them. So they make us go out once a month during the rainy season. There are 475 low priority construction sites. We just have to go to these once per rainy season, just to make sure that they've got their BMPs in place and it's running well. We found 21% of those sites were out of compliance. Small things, it could be missing sandbags, it could be something major, and we have enforcement action on those to bring them back into compliance. We also have to look at our own facilities, our municipal facilities, and there's 27 of those we do once a year. That'd be our corporate yards, even the civic center here. We'd look at those to make sure they're in good shape. In that, we do commercial industrial facility inspections. We have 59 commercial facilities in town. We also have 14 industrial sites that we do inspections in town. And then there's another component in the restaurants. We do inspections in those for what we call fog, or fats, oils, and greases. We have 414 facilities that we visit, and this is different from health department inspections where they're looking at food quality, cleanliness and stuff. This is just looking sure that we don't have a grease buildup or something that's going to cause a sewage spill or something else that would cause a water quality problem. We had 55 corrected violations on that. And the good news is that the violations decreased this year, 18% from last year. So we're showing progress. Under the program and policy oversight, there's a lot of folks that look at this, including yourself, the city council. You give us guidance, you approve agreements, amendments, and with that, we also have, this city has anyways, a water quality coastal tidestance committee that looks at water quality issues, kind of packages things up and feeds back to staff or up to council. Where you need in this area, we have a watershed, the Newport Bay Watershed Committee, and actually there's staff committees that go with that too. And then there's NPDS technical advisory committees and working groups that we staff at various levels. With regard to the Newport Bay Watershed Executive Committee, this is a key committee, and it's kind of unique that I've seen. We don't have one in the northern part of the county. We have kind of a similar one in the south part of the county. This is a cooperation between many cities to solve TMDL and water quality problems. Councilmember Gardner represents the city on this and sits on the executive committee. And listed here are all the partners that we deal with. Many of them are government organizations, but you'll notice the Irvine Ranch Water District's on there, the Irvine Company, also the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Getting a feel for how big this watershed is, here's a map that shows the boundaries. And this extends from the city of Orange all the way in the north to the city of Mission Viejo and Lake Forest, all the way on the east side. We go into portions of Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, and we reach down south all the way to Laguna Hills and Laguna Woods down there. That water all works its way down San Diego Creek, where Peters Canyon washes from the north, ends up coming into the upper bay and then down through the lower bay. So it's quite an extensive area and a lot of urbanized area, along with mountains and agriculture land that feed into it. So we mentioned TMDLs. We have several TMDLs. These are special requirements on our area above and beyond the permit requirements. And our oldest and first one is sediment. And what the sediment TMDL is looking at is trying to address the unchecked sediment being deposited into the upper and lower bay. And this is key because as that sediment comes down, it causes biological problems, clogging, hydraulic problems, and ultimately, as we found out, even in the lower bay, navigational problems. A lot of water quality problems come out of that. The sediment TMDL was put into place back in 1999, and again, we started to begin addressing this back in 1983, but we actually got a TMDL in 1999. And what the TMDL did was establish numerical limits. This, again, is just a picture of San Diego Creek. If you're familiar with that, you can see the nice beach up there. I'd love to have that sand on our beach, but it's slowly working its way down to our upper bay. And we're looking at ways to address that through this TMDL. The TMDL has a bunch of numerical limits, and I've listed those here. And the indicators, the first one is the sediment load in San Diego Creek itself. And the limit is that we can't have more than 62,500 tons on a 10-year average moving down through that system. We're currently in compliance with that limit. With that, we also have a sediment load limit on the upper bay, and that's the same amount of material, the 62,500 tons moving down into the upper bay. We have various catchment facilities on the system, and two of those are in the upper bay. We have two big basins in there. As you went through the dredging project we did years ago, they established those. So there's numerical limits on those that we have to maintain a minus seven-foot mean sea level in that. Both of those are currently in compliance right now, and we have extra volume in there for storage. And then there's one other limit that is out of compliance right now. This is the habitat acreage limit, and this was set back when they originally set the TMDL. And the limit has to do with how much salt flat and how much mud flats and things we have. The baseline TMDL limit there is 277 acres of salt marsh. We currently have 350 acres of salt marsh. And this isn't particularly a problem. We've worked with the regional board on this. They're actually thinking that they underestimated the amount of salt marsh. So we're looking at a legislative corrective way to address this limit, maybe changing the TMDL next time we get into it to address the current salt marsh acreage. So we're generally in compliance with sediment. Here's a kind of a loading chart that shows you how the sediment's gone over the years from 1992 to present. The red bar is just the 26,500 tons. The green bar is the 10-year running average of that. And you can see, in the early years, we were not catching a lot. In fact, those big spikes of the sediment loads for each year, some of those correlate to large rainstorms we had. As you get further on down, we've put a lot of sediment control measures in place. Now we're finding ourselves in compliance since 2008. And again, a large storm could change that. You see 2011, we had an exceedance of the baseline, but we run on a 10-year average on that. One of our other TMDLs is the nutrient TMDL. And again, this is trying to address excessive nutrients causing algae blooms in our creeks and bays. The nutrient till was adopted in 1998, and the goal was to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus loads by 50% relative to some baseline loading in 1990 through 1997. We also have special requirements that we reduce the summer load by 50% by 2007, and we also reduce our winter loads by 50% by 2012. And the way we've addressed this over the years, there's several treatment methods. I've listed a few here. We used to have a lot of problems with nursery runoff up towards the Great Park and the nurseries up in the higher part of the watershed. We did programs to recycle that water instead of just a lot of fertilizer-laden water coming off the nurseries. We built check dams and recycling, and we take that water now and put it back and use it on the product, and that's cut down the amount of nutrients coming off there substantially. We've done a lot of educational programs trying to address the maintenance service areas and the gardeners to make sure they use the proper amount of fertilizers and make sure they apply it to just the plants and not overspray onto the streets and walkways and sweep up and control spills and things like that. And then we've also introduced what we call natural treatment systems. These are inline or offline basins that actually are vegetative filters and actually absorb the nutrients out of the water stream as it passes through. And currently, we're meeting our targets on this. We've seen a substantial reduction in the amount of algae blooms in the upper bay and in the creeks. So that's a success story. This is a natural treatment system that's up in El Madina Park in Orange, and really there's a lot of plant life. The drainage is going through this basin as it passes down and before it heads down to the bay. And this treatment system will be absorbing those nutrients out of the system. Slide here for just to kind of show you how our reduction in the nitrogen lows has happened since 2009. And you can see, we had a high level, and then the last several years, we've really been below that limit line, and that's a success to some of the early work we've done in this area. This has to be regards to our algae bloom. That's kind of our target and our indicator. And you see, as we look back in 1994, you can see a red line in the middle. That's when we brought the San Joaquin marsh online. And prior to that, a lot of that nutrient level was very high, causing a lot of algae blooms. You can see the slope of the black line, which is kind of showing the trend as we go past, and we've been below that density limit. And we've been below that density limit for, since basically 1999. And we're seeing a decreasing trend on that, which is good news. One of the more complex TMDLs is the organic chlorine compounds. This is, the issue here is its toxicity associated with legacy pesticides. Organic chlorine compounds, or OCs, are basically your DDTs, PCBs, peroxides, other legacy pesticides. There's a TMDL established in 2007 to try to address these. Our NPDS permit requires us to sample the sediments for toxicity. The good news here is that the source of these pesticides is going away. As we see more urban development, as we have natural decay in the upper watershed, we're seeing them disappear. Consequently, we're seeing the sediment in the lower bay are starting to show less and less of these. So we're hoping this starts a good trend and self-corrects itself. And I had a note there from our staff that pesticide application was reduced citywide by 29% from 2012. So we're making progress on reducing the amount, getting the old pesticides out of the system and addressing it. Another bacteria you might have heard, I'm sorry, another TMDL you've heard about is the fecal indicator bacteria. This TMDL was adopted in 1999, and it really was targeting four spots in Newport Beach. We had originally four permanent postings in the bay due to bacteria. The TMDL was basically for fecal coliform only. That's an indicator bacteria. And currently doesn't address or excludes a natural source as an indicator bacteria. It's important to note that, because we're talking with the regional board now. Natural sources are basically bacteria released in the environment from wildlife, plants, and other things. The TMDL doesn't look at that now. We think that's important, because some of our problems are from wildlife. And it could be animals upstream and things, or releasing bacteria in the system. And we're required to treat that at this point. We'd like to exclude those sources. This slide shows you the four permanent postings we had when we started. And the red dot is the one at the arches we're still addressing today. The other three fortunately have been taken off as long-term postings. Staff has worked hard on those over the years, and they've been removed. The current status of this TMDL, we have three permanent postings removed, as I mentioned. We have one remaining. There's a lot of emphasis. John and his crews are looking at that constantly. We're looking for ways to try to see if we can find what's causing that bacteria. We have a biofilm study underway. We're talking with the county right now. We're trying to make modifications, as I mentioned, to the regional board to change that, to address natural source bacteria, and maybe check some of the limits on this. This is just a slide we put in to kind of show you what's been going on in Little Corona. This shows the red line is the limit, and you can see the trend line that we've been seeing a decrease in bacteria at Little Corona Beach. With those actual TMDLs in place, we have some other ones that are on the horizon and causing issues. You've heard a lot about selenium. We also have a copper TMDL, or discussions going on out there. And we also have trash. Selenium, if you've seen some of this, this is the hotspots in our watershed. The big one, there's that big circle in the middle, that's the Peters Canyon. There's a lot of selenium naturally occurring, coming out of Peters Canyon Wash. We have another hotspot over in Santa Ana that's coming down the Delhi Channel. And then we have our own in Newport Beach, the Big Canyon watershed there. With us, we're addressing ours. We have our partners in the watershed working on the other ones, but we're really focusing on Big Canyon. And the problem here is the high selenium concentrations found in the watershed. We found them in 2008. When I say high, the regional board talks about limits in the, well, about 12 parts per million is a comfort level, maybe a little lower than that. We found concentrations of over 140 parts per million found up by the port streets. This is a spike, obviously, in a certain area, but we have a lot of natural selenium in this area, and it's leaching out of the ground and working its way down. The problem is the high conversion rate of the seleniumate to seleniumite, which becomes more bioavailable, and the birds and the bird eggs affected by that, the critters that absorb that, and we have issues with the absorption of the seleniumate. But what we've done is create a work plan to address this in Big Canyon. We've run this by the regional board, and they like our plans. We're starting to implement this. And you've seen some of these programs come through the CIP and talked about it in various discussions we've had. Familiarity, this is Big Canyon watershed. You can kind of see Newport Center down at the lower portion there. You can see our reservoir site. It's kind of a sole-source watershed that directly discharges right into the upper bay. And our program that we've run by the regional board and have put into place is to basically first try to reduce the amount of runoff. We've looked at things, and I'll talk about the reduction later, to reduce the amount of water going down the system. We're looking at hotspots. I mentioned that peak of 140 parts per million. We know where a couple of hotspots are, and we're putting in stormwater diversions into our sewer system. Maybe we can take that hotspot off. Some of the other branches of the creek are coming in very low levels, so we think we can just take out the hotspot, and maybe we'll get a mix. And as it goes down, it won't be so problematic. We've been looking at the golf court lakes at Big Canyon. We're looking at some kind of mixing devices or something to break that up. We find that the selenium tends to change form when it gets into slow water or still water. So we're trying to keep it moving so it doesn't get to that seleniumite problem. Stream restoration, Lower Big Canyon, we're starting that. We've had some discussions on that. We've got IRC on board, and we're looking at other things to do that. And one of the problem areas has been the fish and wildlife pond down at the bottom just before the bay. And we had a little discussion on that, as you recall, and vector control's been concerned about that. We're looking at, maybe we're doing something about it. And one of our problems was, it creates a lot of, it's kind of a dead spot for selenium to accumulate in. So if we do something with that, maybe fill it in, or maybe dredge it out, we'll probably solve a lot of that problem. We've also talked about maybe some kind of bioreactor. There's some technology out there. Selenium's a real hard item to treat, but there is some technology, and we call a bioreactor, where you can move it through and knock down the volume of it in the water column. So we're looking at options like this in the future if we can't meet our board required limits. Yes?
Can you show us on the previous slide where that fish and wildlife wetlands is located?
Yeah, if I can, it would be right, you can kind of see it right here in the sketch right here. I'll circle it to right before the bay there. The hotspots we found are up in this area, and the selenium is working its way down through here, down through the golf course lake. You can see the little blue spots, and working its way into this marsh.
I had a question from here. With this proposed selenium plan in Lower Big Canyon, it seems to me that the selenium happens when the water ponds up. If the water keeps moving, we don't have that problem occur. Is that accurate?
Well, I think what the science says, if it slows down, it changes form to the more problematic form. I don't have the exact definition of that. There's still, even in the moving water, we still have a selenium problem. There's high levels.
Okay. So instead of developing all of these sorts of, you know, constructed wetlands and those types of solutions, why not just keep the water moving and channel it in a way? And I don't mean channeling and, you know, putting in cement channels, but getting that water moving so that it goes into the bay. And once it's into the bay, you're not going to get selenium. So, and I think with the vector control, that's part of their solution, is to, you know, just stop creating ponds and having things pond up. So what would be your response to that?
I think that'd be a good solution. We'd have to, again, this is where the regulatory agencies kind of conflict each other, because on one hand, they want to get rid of the selenium. That would be the regional board. Fish and Wildlife would like to keep the habitat value up. And so when we channelize and slow, if we take the speed out of the water, maybe, whether it's a man-made channel or earth-in-channel, we do speed up, we reduce the amount of habitat value. And then we have issues there. So I think what we're looking at, if we can take some of these hotspots out and stuff and monitor, and maybe we can knock it down low enough that it might not be problematic, in combination with maybe, maybe we don't need that large pond at the bottom. Maybe it's taken out, and we just bypass it or something.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice if fish and wildlife were to invest in their habitat on their property. And one of the problems is, I mean, how much longer is that going to continue to degrade?
Good question. So we have another emerging TMDL. We've been talking with the regional board on copper. And this is an interesting TMDL that they're talking about. There's actually one up in Marina Del Rey that's in place. We've had a lot of talk about this before the boat community. They tried to do something down in Shelter Bay down in San Diego. They had some requirements that are going to try to reduce the amount of copper paint down there. And the problem is, there's legacy copper in the sediment. And the other big generator is the anti-fouling boat paints. They have copper in them. And of course, it's great to keep the barnacles off, but it also releases copper. So the issues with this that we see is, copper-based paints are legal currently in California, United States, and they're a great proven product. The boaters have serious concerns with switching over to some of the non-copper-based paints. There are a couple alternatives being developed, but they're concerned they don't work as well, or they could be more expensive. And they feel like not looking at BMPs rather than just banning copper. Some of the thoughts were, maybe there's better ways to train the scuba folks who clean bottoms, so they're not so rough, or they clean in a different, well, a manner, so we don't rub off so much copper. Maybe we can apply it in a different manner. Maybe those BMPs would reduce it enough so we don't have a copper problem. So there's a lot of issues we have to talk about here, particularly the one, and I'll talk about later, one of our goals on copper. Under the trash side, this is not a TMDL either yet, but we've been talking about this. The executive committee has talked about this. There's actually a pilot plant in our watershed that they're looking at trash. There is a trash TMDL, if you follow water quality issues, in Los Angeles. We do not have a trash TMDL. But the city actually is in the forefront of staying ahead of this. You've seen this device here. This is a continuous deflection separator unit. There's a picture there of how it works on that. And the picture in the middle is basically our installation of these. These are one matter of catching our trash. Under the OCTA-funded grant programs, we've currently installed two of these, both on Newport Boulevard. We have several pending installations that are grant-funded on Balboa Cove, Dover Drive, and the list there. And then some of the private communities and their BMPs have installed this. We currently have about 30 of these in our city. Interesting note on this, and you'll probably hear about this. We just had a recent water quality issue yesterday. Mesa Consolidated Line broke up in Costa Mesa. It was due to a fire contractor working on it, closing a valve too quick. We had water hammer, it blew the line out. And we had a huge discharge down Newport Boulevard through our storm drain that runs through the city yard. Luckily, we had one of these in place there, and I understand from the staff that it's basically full of mud and debris and rocks. So it caught a lot of it, but a lot of it did get through, and it ended up down at the arches drain. So we'll probably read something about that. I think it's more silts and finds that came through. But this had some benefit by catching a lot of that material that came down from that water break up in Costa Mesa yesterday. You see a picture here. You can kind of see, when we open the lids up, it catches a lot of bottles and cans, and a lot of stuff falls out. So this is one defense we're doing on trash ahead of time. Again, not required, but it's a good thing for us in the bay, trying to keep the trash out of the bay. Another item, this is very creative. John Kapler actually brought these into the scene. These are trash skimmers. And you see the two pictures at the bottom there. There's the one with the lids closed, and one with the lid open. If you go down to the bay, particularly the Balboa Yacht Basin that we own, we have two of those. And the blue dots represent places that they're currently in place, and the red dots represent where we're putting these. These are just devices that run kind of quiet in the background, and they skim the top of the water. They're open on the bottom, so if any fish get flipped up or anything, they just go out the bottom. But then you come back in later, and you can net out. You can see one open there, the plastics and the cans and things at the bottom on the left-hand side there. I'm sorry, the right-hand side. So we have several of these in place. We're going to add a few more. We put one down at the end of the Rhine Channel, which was a natural collection spot for a lot of trash, and it's picking up a lot of that windblown trash down there. Another advanced feature we're trying to address our trash. Another program and project underway is the Santa Ana Delhi Channel. And I mentioned this a little earlier. This channel comes out of Costa Mesa and Santa Ana and feeds into the upper bay. This channel has problems with selenium. There's a high selenium load coming down here, along with other contaminants in the low-flow stream. And there's also a large degree of trash that comes down this channel. So staff is working with the other cities that are listed, Santa Ana, the County of Orange, and Costa Mesa, to try to do some kind of a BMP where we'll put in maybe a first-flush trash gate that diverts all the material into a basin where we can take as much trash out as we can. And then year-round, it'll run a low-flow dry diversion where we'll take that low-flow stream coming through there and take it out and either divert it to the sewer, or one of the thoughts is, we're going to pump it into that lake in the golf course. Uniquely, that lake is the pond that is used for irrigating the golf course. So we figured if we can get it in there, then they can go ahead and pump it out and use it for irrigation water. So that's in the drawing boards right now. We're hoping that will move through soon. You were familiar with Buck Gully. We did restoration projects several years ago. This was mainly to stabilize the canyon walls and reduce the erosion. But it also absorbed and sequestered selenium, reduced the bacteria load. And I think some of this improvement is what's helping Little Corona reduce the bacteria load in that. We removed invasive plants on the side, restored a lot of native plants in this area. We've done other projects in combination with the state parks. We received a lot of property four money, and part of that was with the help of the state park system. And for that, they constructed, we got the money, we went ahead and designed and constructed this using 100% state funds to build a parking lot modification. And one of the parking was to catch the runoff before it goes off into the coast. We have an ASBS off this coast. It's kind of a mutual project, and it was goodwill and came out real nice. We do other things on the operational side. We have annual drainage system cleaning. We have to go through our system under our NPDS permit to clean the entire system every year. And we have 3.2 miles of drainage channels and system that we have to clean. We have 3,255 catch basins that need to be opened up and cleaned out. Last year, we removed 455 tons of trash and debris before the season. You also see that we screened some of our catch basins off. The pictures are what the crews are doing there. We put 435 debris screens up every dry season to try to keep the trash out of the system. Under the water quality program, we have a sewer component. Under the sanitary system, we want to make sure that's operating fine, because if you recall, years and years ago, we had a lot of sewer spills. And you're not hearing too much about that anymore, because we're doing such a good job on our sewer systems. We started surveying our lines back in 2003, and the city actually bought a camera truck and equipment. And we'd go through and look at our lines and make sure we don't have breaks or things that might cause backups, buildups of grease or something in there. So we regularly clean these lines, all 203 miles of it, to make sure they're in proper working shape, thus avoiding a lot of spills. We also provide five public pump-out stations in the harbor. And this is, again, trying to get the boats to pump it out. And we really watch to make sure they're not discharging it into the bay. They have free access cities, and they can pump out their holding tanks. There's also several private pump-out stations in the harbor that they can use as well. We also have an aggressive street sweeping program in the city. We do 35,605 miles are swept every year. From that, we remove 8,748 tons of trash and debris just in our sweeping program. We have another component with your hazardous waste collection, and this is really done through the county. They have various sites. But from that, we figured we've taken about 100 gallons of paint out of the system, 250 used oil filters, over 1,000 gallons of motor oil that's been recycled versus poured down storm drains. And we also have an e-waste program, which isn't as directly related to it, but it's a good program. Some of these things end up being thrown out in the streets and break up. And some of the metals and things that are in the circuits and things end up going into the system. One of the other big components is our irrigation runoff reduction program. And this is kind of one of the stars. We've done a lot of stuff here, and this is really Shane Berkley's bag, that he's been really pushing on this. We're trying to reduce the amount of runoff citywide, which thus reduces the amount of water going out and taking the contaminants with it. And we've done a lot of emphasis on Buck Gully and Coastal Corona Mar and Big Canyon, because that's where a lot of our issues are currently. We do this through education, irrigation audits. We install high-efficiency nozzles. We have programs for controllers on specific sites and times. We have weather station-based irrigation controller installations that, instead of your standard program where it runs 10 minutes every day, rain or shine, there's, there are now controllers that actually tie into a weather station. It'll tell you, should you need to water and how much you need to water. It's really nice, and it cuts back a lot of water usage and runoff. And what we've found is, between 2011 and 2013, the cities received $1.5 million in grants and funding for rebates on those programs. We've conducted 1,130 water audits and evaluations of homes in our area. We've installed over 1,100 weather station-based irrigation controllers and helped reduce the amount of water being used and the runoff generated. We've installed 85,725 high-efficiency nozzles. And you've probably heard the rotor heads. It's just a more efficient way to put the water on the grass or the plants, using less water and less runoff. And we've serviced about 951 customers, of which 84 of those have been, 84% have been retained when we put in new controllers and change out things. That's a pretty high rate of people liking the program and sticking with it. And our thoughts are, we basically, on the water-saving side, we've saved about 110 million gallons of water per year under this program, basically enough to fill 7,000 swimming pools. So we're seeing a lot of results in this area. This is a little graph we want to include, just to show the difference between the two summer seasons. August, September is our summer, real high peak of 2012, 2013. You can see about 5.2 million gallons of water saved between 2012 and 2013, or 14.4% reduction in the amount of water applied. Another component of our water quality program is just the public outreach and education. And this is done at two levels. There's one by the county, which when we're a co-permittee, and everybody pays and works on a regional level with the county. And they do bus ads, newspaper ads. You see sometimes in the movie theaters, you'll see ads addressing the public awareness. And the permit that we have with the state board requires us to do so many impressions. Last year, we did 3.2 million impressions in 2012. That's a lot of people. impressions. Last year, we did 3.2 million impressions in 2012, that's a lot of people that got a little glimpse and tried to get the positive message of water quality. And then we have a local program that we do, and we do public service outreaches, you've probably seen our flyers, we go out to grade schools and high schools and do education, awareness, community surveys, drawing contests, there's a host of things there that we do. We reach out to HOAs and work with them on improving their water quality and runoff and education, billing inserts, rebate programs. Quite a lot of work going into that. So with that, I want to kind of share your cost on this. This is our capital program side between 2004 and 2014, and we're roughly around $14 million invested in that, 55% of which is grant-funded. We get grants from the state, we get grants from OTCTA. We're really aggressive, looking for money to try to booster this program. These are some of the capital programs, some of which you saw, urban runoff programs, the CDS structures, infiltration galleries, canyon restorations like Buck Gully, bioswells, tide pool restorations, some of the benefits of that funds. The operating costs on an annual basis, we have about $1.6 million involved there, and that has to do with our permit fees under our NPDS and TMDL expenses. Street sweeping is about $450,000 a year. Putting those guards on and replacing those, another $150,000. Canyon and monitoring, we have a lot of money, we have to monitor, the ASBS is $50,000. And then just the staff to run the program, again, we have about three full-time people working on this, that comes about 1.6.
Dave, question for you on traveling tide pools, kind of what came to mind to me is what's happening with the MPAs, the marine protected areas, and is the city involved with that, or who's enforcing that?
I know a little bit about it. We purchased and made the traveling tide pool vehicle to help reduce the trampling and other things that go on with the tide pool areas, but I don't know, Bob, do you have an input on that?
No.
Or Laura, I'm sorry. Laura, did you?
We negotiated a special protections regulation with the state board in 2012 to change the laws where they were disallowing any pollutants into the ASBS, and now it's something a little more reasonable. So now we're into a monitoring mode to see if we have any constituents that may be causing a problem in the ASBSs, and it looks like we may have some problem with copper or zinc or cadmium, so the next year or two we'll be monitoring to see if we can identify those sources. Hopefully, it's not going to be copper roofs and gutters that are the problem. And then as we identify problems, we'll go ahead and see if we can solve those. We're going to try to put a lot of emphasis on the runoff reduction program, reduce our drywater flows, and then these little projects like we did at Reef Point for infiltration, those are the kinds of low, you know, impact kind of projects we're looking at. So we're thinking over the next three or four years, we should be able to convince the board, we don't have a problem with water quality, it's more about public trampling.
Bob? Laura, did you want to add anything to that, or about the traveling tide pools or any of your programs? And I really stress, this is a citywide program. We have the pleasure of administering this, but it's the mod folks, it's the recreation, everybody has a touch in improving this, and Laura has a big component in hers.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening. Laura Detwiler, Recreation and Senior Services Director. We have been working along with Public Works folks on acquiring the traveling tide pool vehicle. We actually do have it, we're working on retrofitting the inside of it. We do expect to get that program up and running by the summer, and we'll be having it down at Little Corona and also taking it into the schools as well.
I don't know if this is in your department, Laura, but the marine protected areas that resulted from a state effort, there's a nice big one in Laguna Beach, as Bob knows. Is the city doing anything with regards to any of the MPAs?
We are. Our marine protection and education staff are heavily involved in that, working at the county and state level as well, and are heavily involved down at the beachfront, trying to make sure that we educate folks about how we can best protect those areas.
Okay, moving on to the fun part. So I asked staff in looking at our program to kind of rate ourselves, and this is, you'll note, staff's opinion, but I wanted to go through and kind of tell you where we are, and also in that, I wanted to kind of point out the goals we're trying to go for each of these programs, and get your input and understanding of these. First one, on the NPDS program overall, I think we do a great job in that, when you look at all the other cities, and we gave ourselves an A in this category, we've done a lot of great work. The goal with the new permit coming up, though, and I've always kind of questioned this, is what are we doing right, what doesn't need to be done anymore, so I'm asking our staff to look at the cost of inspection reporting. We spend a lot of money on reporting and inspection. Maybe we can tune that down a little bit, not inspect so much, or maybe report so much, instead of weekly, go to quarterly or something like that, save some costs there. So we're looking for that under our NPDS program. Runoff reduction, we'd like to continue to expand the runoff reduction program, obviously, with some of the grant programs. We want to encourage more irrigation controllers, the high-efficiency nozzles in that program. We want to look for opportunities maybe to reduce the amount of turf and grass in the city, which is a lot of water use, which obviously leads to runoff. Sediment TMDL, I think we've got a B in that, we've done a lot of work, but we still have some areas to go. We want to basically remove the sediment from San Diego Creek and the Jeffrey Basins, and I'll stop him in on this, I didn't cover it in the PowerPoint, but the way the sediment's trapped right now coming down San Diego Creek is there's three basins in the San Diego Creek itself, just south of the 405 freeway, which trapped the sediment, and we're basically in agreement with the county and our partners, when they reach a level of 50%, that we'll go in there and muck them out and take that sediment out. Unfortunately, it's very costly, because you're down in an environmental area, you're down in the water, coastal zone in some places, so we're thinking, instead of removing that sediment once it gets into that zone, why don't we go upstream and remove it where it's dry, like the picture you saw in San Diego Creek? Let's take it out at the $12 a yard versus $25 a yard down in the water. So we're trying to get the regional board to move that and remove those basins from our requirement, and let us just pre-take out, like, let's say, 250,000 yards now upstream, and just address it all before it gets here. And with that, we also have the two in-bay basins downstream, which have a lot of capacity left, but we'd prefer not to fill those up and have to dredge them maybe every 100 years versus every 20, it's more cost-effective. So that's one of our goals under sediment.
Dave, if I might just comment on that a little bit, I've been doing a little bit of research on Upper Bay on a presentation, and of course, wanted to recognize Council Member Gardner, I mean, she was involved with this pre-council, and Dr. Skinner here, you know, with all that medical expertise, and certainly Dave Kiff, who's totally involved with the policies and the efforts. But what I found out is the first TMDL in California was the Upper Bay sediment, and now we're at a point where, who knows, maybe at some point, we'll be able to get it delisted. So what you're thinking is through these efforts to alleviate sediment upstream, then we could potentially avoid another back bay dredging?
That's exactly it. We've worked extensively, Council Member Gardner's really led that to get that. We're looking to try to delist this. We think we've got the battle won on sediment, with the exception, we need to probably remove some sediment, a big bulk of it upstream, and again, the dream would be to take that sand and bring it to our beach if somehow we could do that, but if we could take it out ahead of time, I think the regional board staff is of the opinion that, okay, we don't have a sediment problem, we still have a fine problem, and that's one of our goals too, to, like, for instance, where we had the big burn several years ago up in the foothills, we're looking at a plan right now to re-vegetate that and also other areas to catch fines as it comes down, but if we can take the bulk of the sediment out, we probably won't have to dredge maybe for 100 years. It'd be that close, so, and then we can delist and move on to something else. So then, under a nutrient TMDL, we give ourselves an A because there's been a lot of work here, and you saw the grass, we dropped that algae bloom way below the required limits, we've addressed a lot of the phosphates and nitrates coming down, we've installed natural treatment systems. So in this area, we'd like to encourage more installation of the natural treatment systems. IRD is doing a lot of this, maybe some other communities, maybe even ours. We want to continue with the educational programs, it's great to hit those gardening services and stuff to make them understand how much we need to control that fertilizer being oversprayed and coming off, and then we just have long-term monitoring in that area. Under the fecal bacteria load, we give ourselves a B now, we still have our Arches Drain, and we're working exclusively trying to find that, but I think if we can include a natural source exclusion in the next round, and also find a way to remove that posting, I think we're in good shape on the bacteria.
Dave?
Yes?
On that matter, I swim at Big Corona regularly, and swim out in the ocean around the pier, and to me, fecal material's fecal material. Why is a natural source any safer for me to swim in than some other source?
Well, one thing we need to know, fecal material, it's a bacteria, but fecal coliform is an indicator bacteria, it's not a disease-prone bacteria. As you know, all humans beings are full of bacteria animals. Alls it tells us is there may be a pathogen or some other problem there, but we're looking for human sources, and that's what the regional board focuses on, they're looking for that human source, and if the fecal bacteria is related to raccoons or coyotes or other things in the system, or natural decay of leaves and stuff, why should we be spending a lot of money to reduce that? So you're right to be concerned, but you're probably swimming in something, and again, it gets into this whole discussion we can have on the biofilm study that Dr. Skinner and John have done, we found a lot of the residual. Is it really a problem, or is it just something naturally occurring? So we're talking to the regional board about that. We may be just be going a little too cautious and spending too much money on bacteria. To answer your question, feel comfortable now?
Yeah.
Organic chloroanins, the compounds, the OCs, again, we think this is decreasing, evidence is showing that, we're seeing as there's more urbanization as the Great Park is developed and some of the old contaminated fields are covered up, we may have lesses coming down. As the Lower Bay was dredged and a lot of that material was removed, we're looking for the monitoring to show that we don't have as much of this built up anymore. So what we want to do with the board is monitor this versus get into an active TMDL and start spending a lot of money on chasing something that may not be a problem. Under selenium, we want to implement the Big Canyon and Delhi projects, we think that'll go a long way to take care of our concerns, and I should mention, selenium is not a problem in the saltwater, it's a freshwater problem. When you get into the saltwater, the limits go all the way up to 70 parts per billion, and we don't have anything to really worry about that. So we're looking at this, and that should take care of the Newport problems. They'll still have to address that hotspot up in Irvine, they have a big issue up there with the central partners. Long-term monitoring to confirm our progress, if we could, for instance, take that one hotspot out, we take that out, we start monitoring, we find we knocked it down enough, maybe we don't have to do anymore, maybe we solve the problem there. Look for additional grant funds, that would be something key to funding that area. Under copper, what we'd like to do is keep reviewing the studies and data on that. We're not convinced that copper is really a concern, it's kind of a mixed bag on that. We want to monitor the proposed TMDL on that, and one of the big things I think our position might be, and if council is agreeable to these goals, is that if they're going to impose any copper TMDL, we think it ought to be applied statewide or countrywide versus just Newport Harbor, because the boating copper, if it's a problem in Newport, why isn't it a problem in San Francisco or Monterey or other places, so that we're not singled out just via the copper TMDL here. Trash, I think we've got a B there, we could do more, but we're way ahead of the curve, I think, so we want to continue to be proactive on that, and removing that, so if we do get a TMDL, we're in a good position to address it. Some of our reports, and you've been seeing these over the years, our Heal the Bay report cards have been getting better and better, we've taken off the bummer list and we're on the A-roll a lot, so that's showing us, we're having a lot less postings, we're having a lot less sewer spills. I think our fruits are starting to show off here. With that, I'm going to open to questions, I apologize for the length of the PowerPoint.
Counsel? Yes, your PowerPoint was very effective.
Okay.
Certainly impressive. Any more questions from the council, I'd throw it to the public, anyone from the public would like to speak on this matter?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I thought it was an excellent presentation regarding the TMDLs, which I think we heard is total maximum daily loads. I think it's great that we're reducing level to bad stuff. One obvious question, perhaps you know the answer to it, I'm not sure I do, that didn't seem to be answered, in one case, the bacteria, if we exceed that standard that's been imposed on us, we get beaches posted, an obvious penalty or consequence of not meeting the standard. With the other ones, like sediment and so forth, what is the regulatory or other penalty that we face if we don't meet the standard? Thank you.
To answer the question, I don't know the specific penalties, because we work closely with the regional board, and there's probably some leeway, they show that we're improving and addressing the situation. Surely, we'd have a penalty if we were negligent in even doing anything, but that's not the case here, and then those are usually negotiated on a case-by-case, depending on the severity of the infraction.
I just think that the city has a lot to be proud of. We started this a long time ago, and devoted a lot of money to it when nobody was really talking about some of these issues, and you can see the results, which is really neat.
I don't know if it's possible, but it seemed to me if you could take this and boil it down into an elevator speech, with maybe three or four metrics that could be used to convey to the public, that this would be great information to put in the water. Methods that we have communicating with the public so that everyone is aware of the effort and the results.
Well, Shane put together just a fantastic brochure on not only water quality but energy, I think it's online, on our website. Good idea, thanks.
It's too bad so much of this is so unique to, in fact, specific to our circumstance here, because if there was some way to show comparisons across, let's say, you know, all the coastal cities in Southern California, I have to believe that we would show up very high-ranked in terms of all the things that we're doing, and especially in consideration of all of the area that we have to look out for here, between Upper Bay and the Bay and the ocean beaches. It's a tremendous amount of area to really take care of.
Yeah, we actually, I always tell the staff, we encourage the inland cities to be successful too, because their success helps us. Every time they stop some trash or something, it doesn't come downstream to us, so we're really pushing that too, to help them get grants and things.
All right. Thank you very much, and we'll move on to the last item on our agenda, public comments about items on the closed-door session. Do you have anyone that would like to make comments on the closed-door session?
You know, while they're walking up, I'll make one other comment on the last presentation that we had, and that is that we accomplished this much with really a very small staff, and so we get tremendous bang for the buck here in terms of the amount of personnel that we throw at this problem. It's really pretty amazing.
Yes?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hill, members of the council. I just wanted to make a few comments. Barbara Peters, Corona Del Mar, thank you. I just wanted to make a few comments about the fire rings. You've all heard that there's a bill moving forward in Sacramento that has the risk of making air quality, local public health, and local public health subject to a coastal development permit. It's very bad policy, a lot of people think it's very bad policy, and we're going to see how it goes in the Senate. It's my understanding that it will likely go to the Environmental Quality Committee first in the Senate, and they have a pretty good understanding, I think, of air quality issues, so it should be an interesting process, and then it may also go to Natural Resources. I came here tonight because I wanted to urge the city to be proactive in what happens in the Senate. I think you need to be heard in Sacramento. The AQMD was there, the Coastal Commission was there, the City of Huntington Beach was there, and the City of Newport Beach wasn't. I think it's important that you tell them about your commitment to clean burning fuels and your commitment to public health. Tonight, you're going to be talking about what can be burned in the fire ring, the sand, you know, I see natural firewood and low-emission logs on the list, and natural firewood is kind of like clean coal. I mean, I think wood, however it may be named, natural is the source of wood smoke, and wood smoke is what creates PM 2.5 that, you know, is now known to be cancer-causing. And I just want to mention, you know, respectfully, I know it's a difficult thing, I don't like to talk about enforcement, but I think there's been a real failure of enforcement so far in what can be burned in the fire rings. Just after the holidays, for example, it was a no-burn day, right around New Year's, we had our own little forest fire down at Big Corona. They were setting trees, Christmas trees, on fire upright. I looked out the window to see flaming Christmas trees, it was crazy, and I think, you know, it's one thing, you know, for me to call in and get a response after the damage is done, but, you know, I hope you're considering how to address what's being burned before it's burned, and some level of supervision that can do that. I really think the only way to get through this is to continue to do the right thing for people's health. You know, we continue to suffer with the smoke, it's been a terrible winter, and so I want to ask you, when the time comes, which I understand is going to be probably not before March, could be as late as June, when these hearings come up, please go, please talk to Sacramento. talk to Sacramento, and in the meantime, please comply with Rule 444, don't allow wood burning, and please stay on track with alternative fuels. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. May I be so quizzical as to ask your topic?
Firings.
All right, letting this, this is really public comment on items on the closed-door session. The firings is actually on the agenda of the next council, of the council meeting this evening. But go ahead, please do.
I want to say that, first of all, I'm very happy to see that the board is very, very concerned, all of you, about human pollution and what we're doing to our environment. And--
I'm sorry, your name, please?
Charles Farrell. And people that are married to the fire pits have choices. There is no shortage of fire pits and open beaches in Orange County, no shortage. However, in densely populated neighborhoods of Newport Beach, the residents have no choice. If we all packed up our bags and left, others would move in, and their health would be compromised. At Balboa, plumes of black smoke can be seen a mile away. We have to keep our windows and doors shut most of the day, because we never know when we come home if our homes will be full of smoke. We're exposed to this superfine chemical concoction of particulate matter, class-one carcinogens. These floating chemicals penetrate the human body instantly, sticking to our lungs, brain matter, and other body organs, linked to the very worst kinds of diseases known to man. People are burning everything under the sun, there is no way to supervise what they're burning in the dark of the night. If you, even if you halved the safe distance established by the air quality management districts, our homes would still be in the chemical danger zone. So my question is, who is going to protect us? My friends, neighbors, and I, we don't want to die early from this daily exposure, or acquire terrible diseases later. We can't let outsiders who really don't give a damn about Newport Beach to determine what is fair and just for those of us who reside in this pollution zone. The immediate solution to all of this is really very simple, just one simple thing. It's an answer, and it's the right thing to do for everyone, both sides of this issue. All we have to do, right now, right now, before the meeting that's coming up today, is stop the wood burning. That's it. Just stop the wood burning. Leave the fire pits where they are. Just say, "No wood burning," until a safe solution can be found. I ask you to do that for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I am not going to speak about firings. I would point out, though, that the agenda does invite comment on study session items, regular attend items, closed-session items, and non-attend items. And I would like to speak about study sessions and closed sessions in general, and the way that we implement them. First, in connection with that, I wanted to observe that the study session is agendized as a city council meeting, separate and distinct from the evening meeting. It is announced on this yellow agenda that starts with a roll call, and it ends with an adjournment. And this bothers me, because it means that the closed session that you're about to hold is kind of left hanging in an indeterminate limbo between two separate public meetings. This has been our custom for a number of years, but it does not match the custom I observed elsewhere. That custom, which in some cases, I believe is legally required, is that the closed session is held entirely within an open public meeting, as was the case here when you had a special meeting on January 13th. And if one chose to sit here, as I did, you come back at the end of the closed session and announce when it has ended, and what, if anything, you have decided that needs to be reported. I would submit that if you're starting a closed session now, this study session technically should not end until you come back here to tell us you're finished with your closed session, and whether you did something in it. The remainder of my comment is about the notion I've often heard that no action takes place during the study session. That's kind of a fiction, because today's agenda, like most, indicate that staff is seeking your direction. In other words, the city manager is offering proposals to you to deploy staff resources in one direction or another. And by nodding your heads, or making comments, or whatever, he's getting direction, you are making a decision. So I would like to invite you to read the written comments I directed you to, about how action taken is defined in the Brown Act, and the new requirement about the reporting of who is on what side of an action taken. And just as the public has a right to know when the closed session starts and ends, we have a right to know what direction the city staff got from each of our elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Hello, members of the council. Cody Call, live in Newport Beach, I guess. If I may, in regards to the previous presentation, I was wondering what is being done in order to achieve the 350 acres of salt marshland, when we have a current 277 acres? If that is anything that may be answered.
Actually, if I can clarify, that's backwards. We actually have 300, and we only need 277. So we have more than we need, they're going to rectify that.
Amazing, thank you.
Hope we can answer your question. Last call, public comments. Then we stand adjourned until 7:00 PM this evening for our regular meeting. Thank you very much.
As far as the closed-session announcement, the city council adjourned a closed session to discuss the performance evaluation of the city clerk, Lillani Brown, and also to meet with labor negotiators, designated representatives are Dave Kiff and Terry Cassidy. And they'll be meeting to discuss all of the represented employees. And those items are set forth on the regular session agenda under Item 2A and B. Thank you.
Thank you.